2020, 4:30 PM. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jimmy Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
Mayor Jason Larry.
Here.
Is that performed?
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, the business on the agenda. Excuse your absences.
Excuse it, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, we didn't get the agenda.
All right, counsel. Calling a meeting, stage case.
Mr. Mayor, it was and still is the belief of the majority of the council that the notification provided for the city clerk via email on September 23rd, 2019, and October 14th, 2019, is sufficient for an excused absence. So I move that the excused absences are hereby ratified and entered into the attendance records. Counselwoman Calm.
All right, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm gonna make a motion. What absentee, what are you talking about?
Absentees that were on. I hear Monday, October 14th.
Okay, I'm sorry. You have to catch me up. I didn't get any paperwork on what's gonna be presented here today. So when you're saying absentees for...
For, yes, for October 14th, 2019, and September 23rd, 2019, which I just stated a few months ago in my motion.
Okay, and that absentee is for Counselwoman Calm?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then were there a reason for the absence?
Yes, those were excused absences. We're making a motion that those were excused absences.
So while we're in the middle of that, counsel. Mr. City Attorney.
I don't know if the motion has been set.
I guess so.
The fact, for the record, I want to read the provision out loud. The following shall result in an elected official forfeiting his or her office. This is, I'm reading from the Charter, Section 2.03, subsection A. I say again, the following shall result in an elected official forfeiting his or her office. One, violating a provision of the Charter. Two, being convicted of or pleading guilty or no contest to a felony or crime of morals perpetuity. Three, failing to attend one-third of the regular meetings of the city council in a three-month period without being excused by the council. As I understand it, it is that subsection three, failing to attend a provision that is the subject of the discussion this evening. It does in fact provide that failing to attend but without being excused by the council. Regrettably, the Charter does not expand on the being excused by the council. It doesn't say without being first excused by the council, nor does it say that the council can after the fact excuse an absence. If it is the case that the Charter causes a forfeiture in office upon missing a third of the meetings or under some set of circumstances, that forfeiture would occur by operation of law. And it's my opinion that once the office has been forfeited, the council could not retroactively go back and excuse the absences. So in my opinion, if there's been a forfeiture, there has been a forfeiture, and I'm not stating an opinion one way or the other whether there has been a forfeiture, but I'm saying that if there has been a forfeiture, then that could not be remedied by retroactively excusing the absences because the forfeiture happened by operation of law once the absences occurred.
So are you saying that if a councilperson would give a call to the city clerk or give a call to one of the council people or a couple of the council people or the majority of the council and let them know that they'll be out, that is not an excused absence? What is defined as an excused absence?
I think as a threshold matter, the, there has to be a request for an excuse. And I have not seen in the document that, that, I don't know how the communication with the city clerk occurred, but I know that the council would have to excuse the absence. So at minimum, I think there would have to be a request that the council excuse the absences. And I don't know whether that happened or whether that did not happen. I haven't seen any documents as it relates to what is being held on as an excuse or the basis for the excused absences. I have not seen that.
Mr. Attorney.
Sir.
If I attend one-third of the meetings in a six-month period and I fail to meet that threshold?
The Charter provision in that regard serves ambiguous. I believe you and I may have corresponded about that. I'd like to, if you'd be able to, pass that on to the man. I have labored over this Charter provision and reasonable minds can differ. And what I'm handing out, the provision again says failing to attend one-third of the regular meetings of the council in a three-month period without being excused by the council. What does that mean, failing to attend one-third of the meetings? On the one hand, failing to attend could mean missing. So the provision could read, missing one-third of the regular meetings of council within a three-month period results in a forfeiture. So if you miss a third of the meetings, you've forfeited your seat. On the other hand, failing to attend could mean failing to attend at least one-third of the meetings in a three-month period. Now to that interpretation, one-third attendance would be the minimum requirement to stay in office. So you could miss two-thirds of the meeting, so long as you came to a third, you'd be fine. So either one of those interpretations is a reasonable construction of that Charter provision. And I think both of them are fair readings of the Charter provision. So I think the provision is ambiguous. It does not, I cannot say what it means. And so I can't answer your question. I mean, I think it's fairly susceptible to two distinct meetings, and those meetings are diametric.
So if you can't answer the question, how can we make a ruling on that?
I'm not purposed to make a ruling on that provision. I mean, Councilman Turner asked me a different question, which is about failing to attend one-third. That I can't answer because I think the provision is ambiguous. I think that on balance, the second question, or the first question that was asked about being excused, I just don't think that you can retroactively, in my opinion, excuse an absence. I think that if there has been a forfeiture of office, that forfeiture of office has already happened, and you can't go backwards in time and say, even though the forfeiture has happened, we retroactively excuse the absences. I just don't think, in my opinion, you can do that.
If we define, or haven't defined, what excuse really means, and are you saying that it would have to be emotion? Or could it be by consent, a lack of emotion?
No, sir. What I'm saying is that the council could manifest their intent to excuse in a lot of different ways. But what I'm saying in this case, I'm not aware that it was a request that the council excuse the absence. And so there was never a request before the council. And that's point A. Point B is, the council didn't excuse the absence in real time. And so if there has been a forfeiture of office, I think that forfeiture of office happened by operation of law at the time the meetings were missed. And I don't think you can go backwards in time and retroactively excuse the absences because the forfeiture's already occurred.
I hear you. What I'm saying is that if it was excused by whatever means, a written request or written notification, then it would not have to be excused because it would be in place if it is interpreted that way.
Yes, sir.
The same thing with what you presented with the two different interpretations.
Yes, sir.
If we went with the interpretation that to meet the attendance threshold, all you need to do is attend one-third, then this would not be a question?
Yes, sir, you're correct. If that's the interpretation that ultimately prevailed, yes, sir.
So when there's ambiguity in the law, the Charter, which shall prevail, where do we go to attain that answer?
Well, the one thing the council can do is seek a declaratory judgment from a court to construe that provision. I think something has to happen because I think that doing nothing is not a viable option. And this is my opinion. Since you asked me, I'm gonna give you my opinion. I don't think that doing nothing is a viable option because I think this is a legitimate and fair question as to what this Charter provision means. And I think on its face, it's ambiguous. And so I think it needs to be resolved. I think, I don't think that doing nothing is a viable alternative. And I don't think that the absences can be excused retroactively.
So now, then, let me just ask this question. So then if there's no timeline in reference to addressing this issue, then we can also always just address it whenever that issue comes up, am I correct? So we're not going back in a sense because it's a timeline. It doesn't say in the Charter that after six months, then it's over, or no, you can't do it, or you can't do it. Because that leaves it open, and all this ambiguity causes problems in understanding or interpreting this law.
What I'm saying is that at a moment in time, the absences occurred, and at that moment in time, a forfeiture occurred. Now, and that, that forfeiture may have occurred by missing one-third of the meetings or by missing two-thirds of the meeting. I state no opinion on that. But if it's, at one point, if it happened, if it happened, if there was a forfeiture, it happened at that time. It happened when the meetings were missed, either missing one-third or either missing two-thirds. But once, once that forfeiture occurred, it happened, and you can't go back and undo it. I mean, it already happened. And so in a way, it does set a time limit. The time limit is, you can excuse the absences, but once those absences go unexcused, then it's accomplished.
When can we excuse absences?
I think you can excuse absences in real time. If, if you're gonna miss a meeting, I think you request an excuse of the council at that time. But if you don't request an excuse, I think that a forfeiture occurs at the moment in time when you missed the required number of meetings. And once you've missed the required number of meetings to affect the forfeiture, the forfeiture happened by operation of law, and you can't be undone by action of mayor and council. And that is my opinion.
Okay, but the Charter didn't say that you have to request an excuse, so does it?
Right. It says it has to be excused by the mayor and council. I mean, taking it to its logical conclusion, somebody could miss a whole bunch of meetings, and then you could excuse meetings years and years and years later. I mean, I think that if you forfeited the office, you forfeited the office, and you did it right then and there. And so, and so the minute you do it, it's a done deal. And I think that you can't go back and undo it. That's my opinion. A perfect example is, in an analogous case, of the former councilwoman Odoma. The moment she qualified to run for mayor, the instant she submitted those qualification papers, it affected a resignation of her office. She was out at that instant in time. Well, she said, okay, I want to withdraw by qualification papers. I changed my mind, I don't want to run for mayor. Well, it's too late. You submitted those qualification papers, you effectively resigned your office by operation of law, and you were out. And you can't undo that by withdrawing the qualification papers. Here, it's much the same thing. If, and I'm not saying a forfeiture occurred, but if a forfeiture occurred, it occurred at that moment in time, and we can't retroactively undo it.
I put a motion on the floor stating that those excuses, or those absences were excused because we have proof of that, because it was submitted to the clerk as well as to the council. So are we saying then that they were not excused? And what defines that again? So I mean, what, I'm leaving my motion on the floor. You now have a second, so we can vote on that and move forward with it, and then settle this right here. I have another question. Taking my personal situation, if I was accused of that, and it was valid before the first of the year, since I've been re-elected to a new term, would that still apply to me?
I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know. My, my, off the top of the head, these questions I looked at, that question I have not looked at. My, off the top of my head, I would say probably yes, but I could be wrong about that.
Then we're still unclear on a lot of things here. This is very serious. In the event we wanted to make an interpretation, are we empowered to do that as to whether it's the two-thirds or the one-third? How much power does this council have?
I mean, you know, Mr. Councilman, I'm really an advice giver. You good folks are decision makers, so you can make the decision that you choose to make. I really offer my advice.
Are you looking at us as whether we're doing something that may be legal or not, or may not be legal?
I've given my opinion as it relates to, I believe that the failing to attend language is ambiguous. I do not think that the other portion of it is ambiguous. I think any logical construction of that would not allow or permit a retroactive excuse.
Not retroactive, but if it was interpreted to say that attending at least one-third would satisfy the requirement, then this would be a non-issue?
I mean, if that's, if that's the interpretation, sir, then that's the interpretation.
So you mentioned at one point it would be from a court of law or whomever, but can this council make that interpretation?
I mean, you do it all the time. And you have to look at the Charter and the laws of the city and do what you think is best. I mean, you certainly can say, we think it means this or we think it means that. Yes, sir.
Well, the motion is on the floor, and I call for the vote.
We're still in discussion, Councilman.
So my thing would be this, the vote that you're calling for, Councilman Turner, Rob Turner, is whether or not we excuse absentees? Or are you saying that they are already excused? Yeah, they're already excused because a proper notice was given for those absentee, absences. The city clerk and to the council. Your contention is that all you need to do is give notice that you're not gonna be here, and that is an excuse to be absent? Well, how else do you do it, though? I mean, you have to let us know, or you have to let somebody know that you're not gonna be there in reference to your position. Right. And Mr. City Attorney, is there any provision in the Charter that says council has to excuse an absence?
Yes, sir. It says without being excused by the council.
So that is by definition how you become excused by a council? But we did not, we did not not excuse it either, though. You understand what I'm saying? Yeah, but not not doing it is not the same as having a plain, clear-cut method to do it. So it's definitely defined that in order to excuse an individual, council has to do it. So I mean, you don't need a definition for what not not is. But it's not one, though. There's a definition for what is, though. Okay, but my call is that those absences were excused. But they were not. Because according to the definition of the Charter, council has to excuse the... You know, we can go back and forth with the interpretation. No, no, no. Because you gave this interpretation. You've given yours or your understanding of it, and I'm giving mine. Now, we can vote on it, and we can move forward. You're not gonna go back and forth with this. Well, I'm talking to the city manager now. So the thing is that, I'm sorry, not city manager, but our city attorney. The thing is, is, you know, either, it's either one way or the other. Is, again, is the definition of excuse is when council gives, when council excuse an individual, or is it not?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I mean, it's not even an interpretation, it's clear. Failing to attend one-third of the regular meetings of the council in a three-month period without being excused by the council. I mean, that's a literal reading of what it says.
Okay, so that's just not going back and forth, and it's just not in the interpretation. So my, my, my point order then would be, if it is not excused, then we can't vote on it to make it excused after the fact? My point is that it was already excused. That's my point. And I mean, we know, like I said, we can go back and forth on this. But the city, but the city attorney just said it was not excused. It's a ambiguity in the understanding of the definition in the Charter, and we're dealing with interpretations, at least. I'm sorry. Okay, so for the fifth time, could you tell us? Six, seven, eight. What's the definition of excuse?
Well, the Charter itself does not provide a definition of what the word excuse is, or how, how an individual is excused from absentee. The Charter does say that the councilperson would have to be excused by the council. I think a fair reading of that would require that there is at least a request made to the council. I mean, the council would have to know that about the excuse or the request for an excuse before the council could take some action. I think it requires some action on the part of the council to excuse the absence. And it is also my opinion that you would have to make that excuse at the time the, the absences occurred. Because if there's no excuse at the time the absence has occurred, then the forfeiture takes place, and once a forfeiture takes place, you can't go back and undo it. And so I think that it would have to be by the council, which at a minimum requires a request to the council, or at least an awareness by the council, and some action by the council. And I think that that action would have to take place at the time of the absences. Otherwise, the forfeiture happens by operation of law at that time, and then the council could not go back and change what has already occurred.
Who's to make the council aware? If the city clerk is made aware, what's the next step after that? According to the Charter?
Yes, ma'am. Obviously, Councilwoman Lee, the Charter does not talk about the mechanism for affecting an excuse of the absence. So it doesn't say send it to the city clerk, send it to the individual council members. It just doesn't say.
And so would that being ambiguous, how does forfeiture occur at that point? If, if the notification was made?
Well, because it's, this Charter says, excused by the council. And so if you think about it just in a fair and ordinary sense, if the council has to excuse the absence, well, that requires some action by the council. I don't think that's kind of a fanciful or structured kind of interpretation. I just think that's a fair reading of it. It's, you have to be excused by the council, so that requires at least some awareness on the council's part and some action by the council to excuse the absence.
Who makes me aware so that I can take the action?
I don't know. The Charter doesn't say, but at a minimum, you would imagine that if a councilperson or the mayor is not going to be present, and you understand that the council has to excuse your absences, then you would want to make the council aware that you're not gonna be present. And if you're, and if you can't make the council aware that you're gonna be present, you would at a minimum say, I can't reach all these council members. Madam Clerk, Mr. City Manager, or whomever, please notify the council that I'm not going to be present, and I request that I be excused from attending the meeting this evening. And then if some public official failed to fulfill that request by the, by the absent council member, then I think the absent council member could say, well, I did everything I could reasonably do to make the council aware, but somebody else dropped the ball. But if there was never a request made to the council, but it was rather made to the city clerk, and no was there a request to say, Mr. City Clerk, Madam City Clerk, please pass us on to the council, that I think it's very hard to say that the council excused the absences at that time.
And inclined to offer a substitute motion? Since there's such ambiguity about what it really means, I don't see how anyone can reasonably cause a forfeiture of office with it being that ambiguous. So it is my interpretation, and it's always been my interpretation, that if you attended at least one-third, you had met the threshold. And if it is in order, I make a substitute motion that council regards that as being sufficient to meet the threshold. And, well, I'll do a second motion to clean it up, but that is my motion. Your motion is to clean up?
No, no, no.
That will come later. What I'm saying is, my substitute motion is that this council regard the line in the Charter that says failing to attend one-third as being having that threshold, if you attend one-third, you have exceeded the requirement. So, so to be clear, we're no longer now voting if you're so... Well, if you want, hold on, hold on, before you do that, I need a second. I'm just, I don't know, so I'm sorry. That's fine. So you got a second. Hold on. And so, so just to be clear, you're saying that we're not now voting on whether or not to excuse that? But we're now voting on whether or not one-third is sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, so if that being the case, then we can't even vote on that since that wasn't on the agenda. We can only vote on items that are on the agenda. First of all, the only thing that was on the agenda was the excusing of the absence. Right? So the second, the substitute motion then, I would say is also a point of order. No. They, I mean, this will address an excuse of the absence, and that causes it to go away and not be a Charter's absence? No, actually, I introduce an entirely different issue. No, it doesn't. We're voting on whether or not the Charter, the interpretation of the Charter is correct or not. This is, well, if it's ambiguous, and it was stated that it was up to the council, we make a ruling on it. And I'm just asking for a ruling on it. And again, I mean, we can, we can have a ruling, we can have whatever you want, but we can't have it in this session because that wasn't advertised. It was advertised that it was about attendance. It wasn't advertised about excuse. Excuse attendance. Excuse absence. And this will, and this will excuse the so-called lack of attendance? Yeah, it's, lack of attendance is different than excuse attendance. And saying that one-third or two-thirds or three-thirds counts as whether or not you forfeit your seat has nothing to do with whether or not we excuse attendance. This will, this will fix the issue that caused the excuse absence to be on here. And this, and the Charter will fix the issue as well, but we can't put that on the table. No, no, you're being...
This is like...
...the issue, enough. My motion stands.
So, Mr. City Attorney. Councilman George Turner has made a substitute motion that is different, that is what's on the, that's on our agenda. Does that substitute motion stand or not?
Generally, the, the, you cannot add an item to the agenda. You can't deviate from it. At a special call meeting, at a regular meeting, you can move to amend the agenda, to add items or to remove items. But for the special call meeting, you're limited to the items that are set forth in the agenda. I understand Councilman George Turner takes a position that this is a logical extension of something that's already on the agenda. Councilman Clayton believes that it is not a logical extension of what's on the agenda. I think that it is not something that flows from the agenda. I think the agenda clearly states that it is about excusing absences. I think the substitute motion goes beyond excusing the absences and goes to an interpretation of the Charter, which is something that is different. And again, that's really my opinion.
So, Councilman George Turner, your motion cannot go forward. So we're still on excuse absences? I've heard a couple of three opinions with regards to the excused absences. And as a member of council and mayor, I haven't seen any excused absences that was approved with regards to October or September, those days that I already mentioned, those days that are in question. Charter says it has to be approved by council. We never took a vote on it. We never called for it. Those absences were never approved on that end of it, not even called to be approved. So as the city attorney said, we cannot now go back retroactively to excuse those absences. He said that four times. So unfortunately, calling the clerk, sending us a note, telling all the council persons that's not, what's actually in the Charter for taking a vote by mayor and council to excuse absences. Now, I'm unclear about that, Mr. City Attorney. You can, you can tell me I'm unclear.
I don't think, Mr. Mayor, my, my opinion is that excusing an absence requires action of mayor and council.
And we did not take action from mayor and council to excuse the absence. That's where we are, ladies and gentlemen. So we, we cannot call for a vote to retroactively excuse absences.
I don't see this, but how is it retroactive, I guess, Mr. Mayor? Explain that to me.
Because as the city attorney has stated, the action has already occurred. Um, because as the city attorney has has stated, the action has already occurred. Matter of fact, the action has already occurred October and September of last year.
Shouldn't the notification also been occurring at the act- time of the action?
Notification and approval of excusal is two different things, Councilman.
But no, ma'am, I'm just asking.
What's your what's your question again?
Asking, should the notification be the same as the action itself at the time of the action?
No, sir. Notification and excusal is two different things. And again, I'll fall back on the Mr. City Attorney. If I'm if I'm incorrect about that assessment, then you can let me know. But that's that's this is that's clear to me. There's is very specific in the charter what has to happen to have an excused absence. And that is, you have to vote on it, and it has to be excused. We did not vote on it. You can talk if you like, Councilwoman. Just let me finish. We have to vote on it, has to be approved by a majority of of councils. That did not happen. So now, we cannot go back here today, rewind the clock, and excuse these absences by operation of law.
Clear ambiguity. I am new, but I learned. And I don't understand how there was not communication once communication was made. That's that's number one for me. If there is no clear process which has been stated by council, what then say we to get through this so that it doesn't happen again?
I have a couple of suggestions, Councilwoman. One, you and I have a difference of opinion with regards to what's clear or not. What's clear in writing in the charter is it. And it has to be excused, has to be excused by vote by mayor and council. Neither one of these situations, excuse me, neither one of these dates that happened were none, didn't vote, didn't 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 take an operation of action there, and that's it.
So 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 Mayor, at that point, that's okay, so we can walk together, so you can ask and I can.
Sure.
I mean, you answer and I ask, okay?
Where is it?
Now, we're at that point. Notification was made. What's the next step? According to you, your opinion, not necessarily what's in the charter, because right now, you know, we're not confused about what the charter is.
I'm not confused at all.
No, no, just tell me.
I'm not confused at all. The next thing that would have to happen is that when notification is made, and then the clerk, even from sitting there, can, uh, which she, uh, she she does do a very good job at, then we would, a council person, have to make a motion, say, I excuse this person for this day. All in favor? Aye. All in favor? No.
Okay, start right here. When the notification was made that the two absences were going to occur, had occurred, what happened from notification, person who was notified to council? Was there any communication from the person who was notified to the council to take action?
Yes.
That's my next question.
Because what happens at that point is that the clerk, that's why we do a roll call every day, to see exactly who's here, and then the clerk will state, this person is absent.
Did the council at that time, real time, take a vote on the absences at that time?
Did.
Why?
Because.
That's what the charter says. Why didn't that happen?
Let me tell you. Because none of the people sitting up here made a motion to excuse that absence at that time.
So the council violated the charter, went against the charter?
I'm not saying they violated the charter. They just didn't excuse the absence. The absence.
Where does that accountability come when we know that that, well, you know, I want here, but you know, when when that took place and it didn't take place?
Right.
How was one forfeit their seat because the council didn't do what they needed to do? Oh, no, Councilman Clayton, I want to hear from the mayor, I want to hear from the mayor. Councilman Clayton, can I, are we talking to the mayor? Please, please, let me talk to the mayor. I'm trying to be a big girl, I'm trying to be a big girl.
Yeah, you can be a big girl, be a big girl. I like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Doug. Okay. Go ahead.
So, uh, ask me, ask me that last part.
So when, and I'm, I don't want to assume, but was it our current clerk? Oh, no, the clerk was made aware. And the clerk then said to council that the person wasn't here. Council knew. Why didn't council take the next step according to the charter at that time?
And you have to ask each individual council person. Now, that's my answer. You have to ask each individual council person, why didn't they take action at that time? Because as Councilman Turner did when he first came in here, uh, any council person can make a motion to excuse another council person other than the council person that's not here, because they're not physically in place to to do that. So to specifically answer your question, clerk did her job. Her job is to inform us. So let's take the clerk out of this, no matter who it is. And I know you're not doing anything other than getting clarity. That's that's good. Is then council's responsibility to make a motion to say, I excuse this person for today.
So we're responsible for?
We're responsible for it's right here.
For the attendance of each other?
According to the charter.
According to the charter, so, okay, I want to make sure I'm doing my duties correctly if this is my duty. So say I come to the meeting on the 24th, and George Turner is not here. Am I to say at that time, am I to take it upon myself to ask the clerk, did Mr. Turner turn in an excuse or notification that he's not going to be here? If she says yes or no, am I to say at that point, then council, we need to start that process to say, yes, we're going to excuse Councilman Turner, or no? I just want to know whose responsibility is it if the council person who's going to be out has made notification? Someone who is responsible for making the council aware, then makes the council aware and the council does nothing?
Correct. So.
They pay the price for that. Somebody shouldn't lose their position for that. That's my opinion.
So now, I would I would chime in to say that what you're saying is a responsible course of action. But because of the way our charter is written, and I think it's written really well to address these issues, council can excuse an individual, but council is not required to excuse an individual. And that's where we're getting sort of kind of messed up, because if it was just an automatic requirement, excuse an individual, then we wouldn't even have to address it in the charter at all. We can just, you know, if we're not here, we're just not here, and it's good to notify each other that we're not going to be here, and we're just concerned about having a forum. But so it's clear that we are able to, we are not required to. So don't don't get upset with it with each other because nobody thought to make that, you know, make a motion to excuse an individual. Uh, we we had cases where individuals have actually in advance asked to be excused and that that was addressed. But, you know, in 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 a lot of these cases, and 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 to be fair, we don't have a large number of absentee in in on the council. And I think that should be commended. And so we don't get an opportunity to to even address this issue from time to time. But the most important thing, the most important point I want to get across is that we can, but we are not required to excuse anybody.
So all of that campaigning that I did, and all of the money that was spent, you mean to tell me that the clerk can do her job, and he can come to council? And because you all are so wrapped up in the agenda that you forget to say, that you don't say that Councilwoman Grimes is not going to be here, and I can lose my elected official seat over that?
Correct, you can.
Charter review.
Correct, you can.
Well, I think that ten of the charters that we don't, all right, so you're in the school system, right?
And the excuses come after the students.
No, no, but if if your students missed two-thirds, you know, a third, in 60 days, they were out of school for 20 days. That would cause concern. So you're you're going back and saying, let's excuse our students for being out of absence in 20 days, is not really addressing the issue.
I can't withdraw them.
Okay, yeah, yeah, but, you know, so in like in the APS, you know, out of, uh, public school system, you know, going back and saying, let's let's pass these kids because they couldn't cut the score.
Do it every, every year.
Shouldn't do that.
We shouldn't, but we do. By law, we cannot, we cannot do certain things.
Right, and that's the same thing here. So we're not, we're not automatically required to excuse people. And we don't want, I don't think we want to send a message to our constituents, the people that elected you, that put that you put all that money into, to say that I don't have a show for city councilmen.
Uh, excuse me, sorry. Councilwoman Grimes, are you?
Yes, sir.
You good, okay?
I'm I'm going to stop.
Yes, sir.
My my question is this. I know that the city clerk was informed. Uh, is it whose responsibility after she receives that information to inform us about the absence?
Uh, she.
So that we can vote on it?
Okay.
Okay, I know what you're saying. I mean, it was a compliment, wasn't it, period?
No, it's no problem. Oh, oh, you asking me, or you?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I want to say this again. The city clerk has done her job on every time. Her job is to inform us. Excuse me, Councilwoman, if you want to talk, there's no problem.
I know, I can help you right now.
All right. Then 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 let's show something to call them, it's no problem. All right? So here's the thing. This woman did her job. When when when, no matter who is absent, myself, Councilman, whoever it is, every time, every time, not every other time, every time when we take a roll call, she specifically says who's going to be absent, right there at the beginning of the meeting, every time, whether it's a special call meeting, whether it's a regular meeting, whether we're, period. She does she does her job. So both Councilwoman Grimes and Councilman Turner, you all have asked the 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 question, which you're, but for some reason, we're not absorbing the answer. The question is who is responsible for then excusing the council person from the meeting? They are sitting in these black chairs. We are responsible. And if we don't excuse the individual from the meeting, it is unexcused. We're just informed that the person is not here. And that has what, is that, now, that's what occurred. We are informed that the person is not here. But then it's incumbent, incumbent upon us, or one of us five that's left up here, or four, to make a motion for the excusal and for us to take a vote. Now, that is clear as day in the charter. Am I wrong about that, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, sir, you're you're correct, because you, the council would have to make the motion to excuse.
Exactly. We did not make a motion to excuse. We did not take a vote to excuse. And Councilman, uh, Rob Turner, with all due respect, and and you know, you're out there respectful of each other, uh, notification to the clerk is not excusable. It's not, it's it's not excusing.
Well, there you said earlier, you said that you knew.
How was new?
So knowing and doing nothing, I think that's, it helped me understand that.
Okay. I mean, we helped you understand it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, like, you know, like, everybody knew I had cancer, you know, sort of like that, that in that that situation? So you weren't here at the time.
But I prayed for you at home, come, remember when I talked to you?
As a matter of fact, I saw you and the sheriff at home.
At home.
And you told me.
I told you, prayers are not prayers.
I appreciate that.
That's right.
Thank you for that.
But I did something with the knowledge that I had.
However, since we're on that, nobody took the motion here to excuse me, even after the letter was sent by the city attorney and the clerk advising all of us, advising all of us that we had to excuse me from the dais so that I wouldn't be disqualified, no action was taken. Now, here we go. October, November, December, September, same rules apply. No action was taken for Councilwoman Call when she missed her days.
How you say, what happened to make you stay? I'm saying, was it anything different? You didn't miss two meetings then? No?
Only did I not miss two meetings. Because I wasn't excused, I came to every meeting, every meeting, because I was not excused. Now, here we are with this situation. Like, you follow me on that?
Okay, how did you know you weren't excused? Who told you that?
I chaired every meeting.
Sir?
I chaired every meeting. I chaired every meeting. You know what I mean by that?
No, I know what you mean, but I'm just trying to understand how you had absences. You had absences?
Not one.
You didn't have absences.
Because I couldn't get excused by council. Now, it's shameful, but that's a fact. And the only person that sent in the excusal was Jimmy Clayton. But he's not the majority of what has to happen. Everybody has to be majority of mayor and council for me to be excused.
Let me let me chime in on that. That was sent to us by way of email, and it was never brought up as an issue on the dais as to excuse.
So let me let me chime in on that then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, no, no, I apologize, I interrupt you.
And we had issues with doing that by way of email. It was never brought, they said, I'm not aware of being brought to this dais to excuse the mayor during his period of illness. And I cannot, like, they, I think you didn't miss one odd, maybe two, but that is the one that I'm.
Absolutely not. You you do recall that. Don't have to, I I I know it, I chaired every meeting.
Yeah, but but even at that, it never came to the dais for.
And that's to answer your question, Councilwoman, uh, Tammy, Councilwoman Grimes, it never came to the dais because I couldn't make the motion to excuse myself. All right? And then so that so that people wouldn't be upset with regards to how things were happening. Even the city attorney, which was Tom Curry at that time, said, just send in a note saying you're excusing. I even went to George Turner himself and said, Councilman Turner, will you at least send in a note? And he just told you, he wouldn't know it, says, no, I don't communicate, I'm I'm email that way. Then the next meeting, they had the opportunity to actually excuse me with a vote here. Did not happen.
But you were present.
You know why I was present? Because you wouldn't excuse me. This ain't hard, Councilman. This ain't hard. And see, what what Councilwoman Grimes is struggling with right now, because I know you like I know a book on this subject, Councilwoman.
Well, I think we, I think we've.
Excuse me? No, 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 no. No, 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 no. We're going to finish this conversation. Situation that we have at this point, Councilwoman Grimes, is that you have a person that gives you the information in writing, puts the actual statute in the charter with regards to what has to happen, being excused, all right? I could not get it done outside of this man. So I don't want to give you the graphics of what I had to do, to get off a steel table with my guts burning, to come here and chair every meeting and not miss anything. So I couldn't get it done. So your point is exactly right. Council did not take the responsibility to excuse her or to excuse me. I just sucked it up and came. So when you give notification to the clerk saying, oh, I'm not going to be here, clerk gives us the notification, it is off of her plate now, it is now on us to do something about it. We didn't do something about it for me, we didn't do something about it for her, and now we are here today trying to spin the clock backwards. And the man has already told us six times, we cannot do it. We cannot make a retroactive excuse absences once it has already occurred. Now, am I incorrect about anything I said, uh, Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir, you you accurately stated my legal opinion.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Top of this. I was reading the Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics mentions a 90-day period which to bring up charge. Um, is there a code, I mean, is there a time limit, something like this? This just came to my attention about two or four days ago.
Something like what, I'm sorry, sir.
Uh, a question of attendance violation. Uh, is there is is there a time period for which it is allowed?
No, no, sir, I I think a point that I I think I'm doing a poor job of of making is that if there has been a forfeiture that happened at the time, the meetings were missed. So whether somebody brings it up the very next day or brings it up a year later, I mean, the forfeiture happened when the forfeiture happened. And so, um, and if that comes to light, then it it comes to light. And sometimes it happens quickly, sometimes it doesn't happen so quickly, people don't discover that it happened. But the the forfeiture, I guess the the meeting were missed in September and October. Um, so when that October meeting was missed, forfeiture, if there was a forfeiture, and I've said many times, I'm not staying. I've said many times, I'm not staying in an opinion on whether it was or it wasn't. But if there was a forfeiture in October, it happened right then and there. I mean, when the meeting was missed, right there in October, we may have discovered it in October or November or here in February. But the forfeiture happened by operation of law in October. And so when we talk about a time limit to bring something, well, we're not bringing it. It happened back then.
Okay. So may I ask a question because I see in numbers? And so we said, within a three-month period?
Yes.
So are we going calendar year? Or are we always rotating 1, 2, 3, 2, 3, 4, 3, 4, 5, 4, 5, 6?
Well, the charter.
5, 6, 7?
Uh, failing to attend one-third of the regular council meetings in a three-month period. So it doesn't say, and I would read that to mean in any rolling three-month period.
So we're going to roll all year? Your interpretation, not mine.
The charter says in a three-month period.
In a three-month period.
So it didn't say in a three-month period within one calendar year. It could have been that because everybody said in a three-month period. And that's a, A is indefinite article. It's an A three-month period. I would read that to mean in any three-month period.
So my three months would be January, February, March, April, May, June, July, August. That's your interpretation because it's A three-month. Yeah.
Yeah. You can't count.
It's two, if we don't get something, wait, hold on, Councilman. If we don't get something done, and this is my opinion as the newest person up here, if we don't get something done where we all are clear, we won't be on the news like another city. And guys, I'm embarrassed. Let the record reflect that I'm embarrassed to sit here with no clear interpretation with two, with two attorney firms. And we can't get any more clarification. We have your opinion, which I respect because I'm not a law student. However, comma, we're talking about a, an elected official. We're talking about our constituents. I'm embarrassed and I don't want to be. I'm so looking forward to this. I'm going to turn my mic off.
No worries. So what are we on now, Councilman?
I just want to ask, so if we make this motion, which I make the motion, and we vote on it, is that a nulling void?
Is the motion?
No, if we vote on it and we pass it, or we vote to pass it, whatever, or to approve it, is that nulling void?
I guess to the extent the council leaves it at that, that's, it's left right there. If someone challenges the decision, I mean, because obviously we're in a public meeting and the issue's been laid bare. And so the decision of the council could be challenged in any number of ways. And it might be determined that there was, in fact, a forfeiture and your action to excuse the absences was not effective. That could be a determination if it's challenged.
So as we sit today, here we are, just as clear. And I understand that you're, you're new, Councilwoman Tammy Grimes, but you're smart. Um, we are trying to effect action on something that this city attorney has already told us that we cannot do. And that is a problem. You cannot go back and retroactively excuse the absences. That is a problem, Councilwoman Rob Turner. We cannot take action on this situation in this, in the way it is here. There are other remedies to it that we can explore with the city attorney. But retroactively excusing those absences is not one of them, in my opinion.
Well, I'm not looking at it as being retroactive. I still want to vote on this matter and then we can go from there with that. If somebody wants to complain about it and make a charge with it, that's fine.
I think, you know, complicating the issue don't resolve the issue. And, you know, Councilwoman Grimes is correct. There is no sense in taking something that's already, you know, obviously broken and trying to fix it by breaking it some more. You know, I mean, I think, I don't think there's anybody that will read the minutes of this meeting will misinterpret what has happened here. And, you know, and the fact that we're now, that you're willing to go forward with a vote that, you know, in your opinion, I get it, that you feel this okay. But in the opinion of the city attorney, it is not. Then you're asking us to vote for it. I think that's just really complicating the issue further. And I would respectfully ask that you withdraw your motion.
And I do appreciate your opinion, Councilman. Thank you.
So as we sit today, there's a couple of three things you need to consider, Councilman. One is that, Councilwoman Grimes, all due respect, you were not here doing, you were not even elected doing this period. You will not be eligible to vote. Councilwoman Campbell, all due respect, it's about you and it's a direct conflict. So you cannot vote. It is dead true. So.
I will make a comment about that.
Let the city attorney make his comment on your piece first and then if you comment.
I will most certainly make a comment on that. The motion is live today. So all those who are present and we have a forum should be able to vote. It doesn't matter whether you were voted in at the time of whatever we're discussing. The motion happened today.
Man, I'm the bad guy tonight. Um, the charter says failing to attend one-third of the regular meetings in a three-month period without being excused by the council. Um, I have said that I believe that the, you have to make the, council would have to excuse the absence at that time. And so if my position is that this, the day we can't go backwards and excuse the absences from September and October, then I would obviously be taking the position that an individual who was not even on the council at the time could not go back and excuse absences from September and October. I mean, that's the only consistent and rational position I could possibly take. I do not think that it could happen now and certainly not by an individual who was not on the council at that time.
Ma'am, you entered that opinion before in reference to approval of the minutes. I raised the question if a person who was not at the meeting offered the motion to approve the minutes, if it was legit and I was told that, yes, they could. So does that conflict with what you just said?
I, I don't remember that, Councilman. I apologize, I don't remember that. I'd have to look back at it and say, well, if I said that, then why I said that? But, I mean, I think that, I'm looking at a provision in the charter right now that talks about a forfeiture that may or may not have happened at a point in time. And that forfeiture would have happened, if it happened at all, it would have happened back in October. And so my position is that if it happened in October, it happened in October and it's a done deal right there at that point in time in October. And we cannot today go back and change something that was a fait accompli in October. It happened by October.
No, no, I wasn't arguing that. I was arguing the point that someone who was not on the council at the time could not vote.
Well, I think the distinction would be is that right now, I'm coming from a provision in the charter that I think is different because in many cases, you know, a mayor and council 20 years from now may have to take some action about some things that affected, that occurred when they weren't on council. I'm not advancing the general proposition that a mayor and council cannot take action on things that predated their service. I'm talking about this specific charter provision, which says that if a forfeiture occurred, then it occurred right then and there. And we cannot today go back and undo the forfeiture that happened in October by excusing the absences. It's too late. The forfeiture happened in October. It's already happened. It's a done deal. There's nothing we can do today that will undo the deal. That is my opinion.
I turn my mic back on. Who is responsible then for making sure that what we're doing today happened in November?
But I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
What's that?
I'm only talking counsel. If we're bringing this action now, why wasn't it brought in November?
So it's kind of two questions going on at the same time. Let me try to answer your question. Why wasn't it brought?
That was really tough, Councilman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I can't speak to why someone did or did not bring the issue up in October or November. I have absolutely no idea why I came up, or didn't come up.
I'm sorry, but did you answer the question about Councilwoman Campbell being able to vote?
I was not aware that that was an issue. Um, the charter says that a councilperson's absence has to be excused by the council. I think it's clear that the council would have to excuse that councilperson's absence. The councilperson cannot excuse her own absence.
Correct. So your motion is on the table. You still want to vote?
Yes, I wanted to break it.
All right. Just wants to be on the table, excuse Councilwoman Campbell for those dates that are listed. All eligible folks that can vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Fails. Next item. Withdrawal lawsuit in the name of the city. There is no lawsuit in the name of the city.
That would be my question. Is there a lawsuit? I set up the legal as well.
I ain't found no lawsuits. I don't know about lawsuits.
And can you tell me specifically why I couldn't vote? Because I want to research that.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that.
No, no, no beliefs. Can you tell me why I could not vote in this?
I didn't say, I said, I didn't think anybody could vote on whether or not to excuse an absence from back in October. That was my position. I didn't think anybody could vote. And so that was my position.
So it's not backed in the law?
No, no.
It was just your opinion?
Well, that's all I had was my opinion, ma'am. I mean, I, you know, the charter says what it says and we can all read what the charter says. But despite the charter being in black and white, I was asked my opinion. And I gave my opinion. So the charter says precisely what it says and we can all read the text. But despite having the ability to read the text, I was asked my opinion. But what does this mean? So I had to go and give my opinion as how I interpret the charter. And in my interpretation, which I was asked for, I do not believe that the council can today excuse an absence that.
No, 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 not that piece, sir. The reason why I, as the new councilperson, could not vote, I couldn't vote just then because I wasn't elected at the time that what we're talking about occurred? Is that what we're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that I don't think that you or anyone else could vote on this issue. So I'm not singling out and saying Councilwoman Grimes couldn't.
No, I know that, no, sir.
It could have voted on that because the, if it was a forfeiture, it happened and we can't today excuse what happened back then because the office was already forfeited, if it was, in fact, forfeited. So I didn't think any of you could vote.
But there's nothing on the books that says a councilperson, a newly elected councilperson, cannot vote on items that happened prior to her election.
No, ma'am, I didn't. You're going to vote on a great many things that happened before you were on council.
So then tell me why I couldn't vote then.
Like I said, I don't think you.
Just let me be any of everybody. Tell me why I wasn't able to vote just then. That's all I need is that clarity.
But you couldn't vote because if the forfeiture happened, it happened in October and it was a forfeiture by operation of law in October and you could not vote to take action to excuse an absence that happened that resulted in a forfeiture back in October. If the forfeiture happened, it already happened and you could not vote to excuse the absence to remedy the forfeiture. The forfeiture already happened.
But we don't know if the forfeiture happened because you keep saying if.
That's exactly right. I've been profoundly clear about the fact that I believe that charter provision is unclear. And so I've said charter provision is unclear, but was not unclear though is that if there was a forfeiture, it could not be undone by excusing the absence at this point.
Thank you.
Take a motion for dismissal.
Motion denied, gentlemen.
All right, all in favor? Aye, all opposed.